Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form at the entrance and present it to our city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call to order and convene the City Council and City Council as Housing Successor Agency for the City of Grand Terrace, regular meeting March 28, 2017. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Dr. Mustafa Kukoc from the Islamic Center of Riverside, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Brian Reinars. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) For Lord, you are the most compassionate, the most best, the most kind, the most gracious. We use all your great commands, pray for the city of Grand Terrace, pray for the mayor, pray for the city council, pray for the police department, pray for all the departments of all the impolites. For Lord, we pray to you to share the light as bright and the truth as truthful and grant them their bidding to follow that. And we pray to you to share them the long and the long and give them away from it. For Lord, we pray to you to grant the leaders of this community, grant them the energy, the support, the perseverance, be careful, observe, the rhythm of this community is the best of their knowledge and is the best of their faith and is the maximum that is humanly possible. We pray to you to allow them and enable them to keep in the eagle and view the sick, to clean the hungry, and to help the needy, and to put a roof over the head of those who need. We pray to you to allow them to keep this beautiful city at the last year of peace and prosperity. And we pray to you to focus your eyes of protection on the rhythm of this city, in their homes, in their shops, in their test of work, in their schools, in their hospitals, on their streets, on their highways, and protect them from every sort of evil and every sort of harm. And we pray to you to shower your blessings, your forgiveness, your love, your pleasures, your satisfaction on everyone who is sitting here tonight and all those who are unable to make this meeting and we thank you for making or making this meeting materialize. And we pray to you, may it be very successful, be it, be it, be it.
Amen.
Please make the pledge, put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Kukoc, and Councilmember Reinars. Madam City Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Councilmember Reinars?
Present.
Councilmember Hesse?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor McNebo?
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Before we move on to our special presentations, I wanted to wish condolences to my colleague, Councilmember Doug Wilson, on the scene of his father-in-law today, Eric Weers. And I wanted to close the meeting in his honor, but also in memory of him and in memory of Thelma Winkler Beach, resident since 1983, who was very active in our community and would have been 100 years old today. And so, since we have a closed session, many of you will not be here, so I wanted to say that at this time. But I will follow on into special presentations. Tonight, we are welcoming the Student Engineering Project from the Grand Terrace High School. I have down here that the lead is Matthew Johnson. If you would come to the lectern and begin your presentation.
First of all, I would like to say thank you for inviting us today. We're very honored to present our projects. I am the lead at Grand Terrace High School for the Engineering Pathway. It is, as of right now, a three-course pathway. We have juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. As of next year, we'll start our first senior course. The pathway is meant to give students the opportunity to gain knowledge and skills, technical skills, that they can use to either get a job or apply themselves for further education in college in engineering projects. What I have for you today is two of my projects from my sophomore course, which is Principles of Engineering, and then I also have a Digital Electronics course, which is my junior course, where they learn about digital systems, especially because everyone has a phone now or something that runs digitally. We want to make sure that they have that understanding. So what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to step back in a second. I'm going to have the students present, because who better to speak about it than themselves? But I do want to say I'm looking to start an advisory board to make sure that we are leading the students in the proper way. It would just be community members, anyone that's involved in engineering, that might want to guide us, to make sure the program is leading students in the proper way. We don't want to, you know, lead them astray and give them skills that they're not going to use. So my contact information is at Grand Terrace High School. I'm willing to give it out, whatever the case may be, and I can leave my email or whatever.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for having us here. Principles of Engineering is our sophomore course. We build, design, construct, code, all that. And the engineering course, it gets us ahead. We know what we're doing already. We get ahead, really, just we're set for college because of this course. We go in, know what we're doing. A lot of the engineering courses there, a lot of math, a lot of other stuff. And my classmate, Anthony, we have an elevator capable of going to three floors, first, second, and third, button-based, could go ahead and demonstrate it. And that is it.
All right. So what is it that you're demonstrating at this point?
An elevator.
Okay. Does it stop at each of the floors?
Yes.
Very nice. All right.
Thank you.
We are part of the sophomore engineering class at GTHS, and our project was a cookie-topping machine. So what it has to do is it starts where a gate lifts up and allows a cookie to slide onto the conveyor belt. It stops, we push the bump switch, and then it gets topped off with another cookie and moves to get packaged, which they will demonstrate for you now. We built this ourselves, and we coded for it ourselves as well.
How many cookies did you eat while you were developing this?
Not enough. It was really fun working on this, because we learned a lot of valuable teamwork skills. So yeah, that's our machine. Sometimes the Nutella makes it a little sticky.
Are there any types of cookies that are better to use with this, or does it work with every kind of cookie?
We prefer Oreos, because we like the way they taste. And then we put Nutella on them, so the other cookie can stick better.
Okay.
Are you in cahoots with the Girl Scouts, selling the cookies?
No, but that would be a good idea.
Yeah, it would be pretty good.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anthony McDaniel, and I'm here to discuss about the date of birth display. This is a CMOD S6 chip, which has 48 pins, and what that chip does is it's displaying my birth date. And the first number it will display, a 3, a 1, and a 2,000, and that represents my birth date. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay. All right.
And also, we have Mr. Western, who's been a great supporter. He's our principal. He's kind of hiding in the back, but we want to thank him for coming down. We want to thank you guys all again for the support. This program is only three years, and we're wishing that it grows into something quite large. Right now, we have about 120 students that are being served in this pathway. My goal is to make that 500, but Mr. Western tells me to take it slow. But we're reaching out. Soon, we hope to add a laser cutter. We have 3D printers that we also print, just trying to continue with advancing technology. So any ideas or anything that you would love to share, I'm an open book, or anything that you want to, if you want to come visit our lab, we can set that up as well. Again, I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Now, are these engineering classes as part of the curriculum, or are they outside of the curriculum?
These are our elective courses that are all registered through our UC system. So they are courses that they're taking. Their last course, which I believe is the most influential, is a course where they will actually research, design, prototype, and build a working product. We haven't had any yet, but at other schools, they've had students that created a battery charger that you can put on, like the muffler of your car, and as it, the heat, it turns heat into energy, so then you can recharge any of your batteries and stuff like that. So these students, I mean, their imagination's unbelievable, so we'll see what they create, and I'm very excited to see what they create next year.
How long do these projects generally take them to develop?
These projects were, I think I gave them about three weeks. So that's every day, and they don't like me because I am absent during this time. I literally say, "It's your project. You figure it out." I try to separate myself as much as possible, because I know what I know, I want to know what they know. So these are literally their projects, that they're learning from scratch. I mean, I don't know how many times they sat down, and the elevator didn't work one way or another, and we just had to switch some things. So very hands-on projects, project-based.
All right, thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Hesse?
Well, Mr. Johnson, once again, thank you, and thank you, students, for coming out. You know, like I said before, when I saw the kindergartners, you know, I eat paste and all that other stuff, and they're doing stuff on computers. I think we had Lincoln Logs when I was a kid. We didn't do all this stuff. You guys just keep going, you know. I know part of the things, you know, is, you know, you're designing, building, troubleshooting, you know, and I talked to Mr. Johnson before about the lot of logic and the binary, you know, math is really important, and that's our future, and this is our future. You know, just, you're going to have stuff that's going to fail, but you're going to, you know, come back and fix it, make it better. And, but if you guys can invent me a fishing lure so I can catch bigger fish, I appreciate that, too. So, but thanks again for coming out. I really appreciate it, you know. I'd like to see you guys there at the school, take a tour of your lab, and appreciate everything. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anytime. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I'll just say thank you very much, and I really appreciate you showing how fun engineering can be. Thank you so much. (Applause). Month, and I will go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas all children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides, to be free from harm, and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met, state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, for the purpose of promoting community involvement in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas more than 30,000 children in San Bernardino County were referred to Children and Family Services for suspected child abuse and neglect in 2016. And whereas the Adverse Childhood Experiences, or ACE, study conducted by Dr. Vincent J. Felidi and Robert F. Anda demonstrate long-term health, social, and economic risks that result from childhood trauma, and whereas the prevention of child abuse requires rigorous solutions, energy, strength, determination, and commitment from concerned citizens and the entire community, the County of San Bernardino provides services and professionals in the field of child abuse who are dedicated, compassionate, and skilled in the prevention of child abuse. And whereas the Blue Ribbon, as the international symbol for child abuse prevention, San Bernardino County Children's Network, in partnership with the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, the member agencies of the San Bernardino County Children's Policy Council, and Child Abuse Prevention Committee have planned a Blue Ribbon media campaign. The 19th Annual Shine a Light on Child Abuse Awards breakfast during the month of April to increase awareness of the child abuse. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy McNebo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the City of Grand Terrace, and encourage citizens, organizations, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and other entities in the community to engage in activities and events that assist in the efforts to prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs. Signed this 28th day of March 2017 by myself and my colleagues. And I see that we have someone here to accept on behalf of this organization. I'm going to present this to you, and then if you'd go to the lectern and say a few words. Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the City of Grand Terrace. I wanted to thank you for proclaiming April 2017 as Child Abuse Awareness Month. As the proclamation has already stated, Children's Network is really trying to get the education and awareness out there, especially during the month of April, to really keep an eye out and not be afraid to dial 211 if anybody suspects any form of child abuse, again, even if it's suspect. It is a confidential number, so you don't have to give any information about yourself, just the incident that you may have seen. And as the proclamation stated, April 6, 2017, so next Thursday, is our 19th Annual Shine a Light on Child Abuse Awareness. We are honoring 16 honorees within the San Bernardino County who have gone above and beyond their regular call of duty to prevent child abuse in our county. So thank you again, and that's it.
Madam Mayor, if I may, would you mind telling us who you are on the record?
Yes, my name is John Kineck. I'm so sorry. My name is John Kineck. I am the staff analyst from Children's Network.
Thank you so much for being here tonight to accept that. And with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Following consent calendar, items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without any discussion, and any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. And at this time, I have two requests to speak on item six, so I will be removing that from the consent calendar. Are there any other requests to remove items? All right, seeing none. Oh, is this a request? Okay, item six. All right, so this is for item six as well. I would ask for a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Move approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Mayor, councilmembers, Reinars, Hesse, and Wilson voted yes. Mayor Protem voted yes. Mayor McNebo voted yes. So all consent items, with the exception of item number six, passes.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, with item number six, I'm going to recuse myself. I have a conflict of interest, since it comes from a discussion that has to do with the Riverside Highland Water Company and a negotiation with them. My husband is on the board of that organization, so I will recuse myself and leave the council chambers, and Mayor Protem will run the meeting for this particular item.
On table reason reading, the first slip I have is from William McKiever. May you please approach the lectern.
Yes, my name is William McKiever, 12714 Blue Mountain Court, Grand Terrace, California, and I'm also the president of the Board of Directors of the Riverside Highland Water Company. I appear before you at the behest of our board to respond to this proposed action tonight. I have to tell you, our board is totally in our position of what you're proposing to do with this item on the agenda. Let me give you a little background of the company. Riverside Highland Water Company was formed in 1898 as a mutual agricultural irrigation company. Company service area is certified by the Corporate Commission and includes the City of Grand Terrace. Over the years, the company has successfully converted to basically a domestic water company. You have very little irrigation left. We currently have 4,395 meters. Our service area includes four different jurisdictions: the City of Grand Terrace, City of Colton, a portion of, a portion of the County of San Bernardino, and a portion of the County of Riverside. As a mutual water company, Riverside Highland is a privately-held, nonprofit corporation owned by its stockholders. You must be a stockholder in the corporation to receive water service from the company. The stockholders also bear the cost of running the company. As a mutual water company, Riverside Highland is regulated by the Corporate Commission and the State Water Board. The sole purpose of the water company is to serve high-quality water to our stockholders at the least possible cost. The Board of Directors and staff of Riverside Highland Water Company have worked diligently to keep the overhead costs of running the company as low as possible, while fulfilling the company's obligation to its stockholders. A large part of this effort has been the capital improvement plan since 1986. Since that time, the company has spent $257,796 on capital improvements, $257,796,000 on capital improvements, to the system, including the amount related to 37 miles and main replacement, three new reservoirs, installing remote reading meters, drilling and equipping five wells, constructing new corporate offices and shops, and other pertinences, all towards increasing the efficiency of the system and our operation. This was accomplished by responsible management of the company while incurring no debt whatsoever. The company has no debt. Proposed franchise fee would impose additional overhead costs in addition to the fee itself on the company. The different jurisdictional areas served by the company further complicates this issue. It would be necessary to add an additional line item to the bills for the residents of Grand Terrace only for the franchise fee. Riverside Highland is willing to pay fees to the city based on direct impact of the city's operation on the, of the water system within the city's streets. Such impacts consist of plant checks fees, plant check fees for improvements to the existing system or construction of new facilities, permit fees for construction of said facilities, inspection of street repair related to facility construction, street cut and inspection fees for work related to fishing leaks and pavement repair. But firmly objects to the imposition of a franchise agreement and fee. What you're proposing to do with this item is to spend the citizens of Grand Terrace money to hire an attorney to pursue this matter, which Riverside Highland Water Company will be required to spend our stockholders' money to defend against. The city's constituents and Riverside Highland Water Company stockholders are the same people. If the city pursues this course of action, they will be asking the citizens of Grand Terrace to be suing themselves, essentially. And if the city happens to prevail in this, in this effort, these same people will be paying the franchise fee. It's not the water company's desire to get into an adversarial relationship with the city. This has not ever been the case in the past. But however, the board feels that we cannot let this matter go uncontested. If you have any questions you'd like to ask me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. You spoke for how many minutes? Three? Because there's a note here, Dan Howell transfers three minutes to Bill Mc... I thought you couldn't transfer minutes.
Pardon me?
I'm talking to the clerk. So that was three minutes?
Was that a question to me, or?
To the city clerk.
Oh.
Okay, so then if Dan Howell wishes to speak, you have your own three minutes to speak. Okay.
Well, since we're, since the water company is a party to this action or this potential action, I don't know if the, if the three-minute limitation even applies at this point.
Yeah, it applies. Okay, so then you're saying that you're not going to speak, so then we'll have Jeff Allen is next.
I don't think you can transfer three minutes, King.
You can't transfer three minutes. Okay, so yes, your turn up.
Well, is there any further questions that you'd like to ask me?
We'll hear Jeff, and then we'll go through, any questions the council has, and then we'll, if we need to, we'll have you come back to the lectern.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Jeff Allen, 22549 Brentwood Street. I'd like to know what the city would gain from doing, making this maneuver, if this is something that they're being forced to do, because the street that I live on is a prime example of the efficiency of our water company. I don't want to say that, I don't want to lead anybody astray and say that they're there as soon as there's a drop of water, but they're there really quick, and once they start, it's done. And there's no need for them to have to coordinate with other agencies. As I see that, that's an added layer of bureaucracy that's going to cause delays in our repair. We have a lot of stuff going on in the city, and we have a very good water company, and I really wouldn't want to throw any kinks into that. We have the best water company in the inland empire, and I'd like it to stay that way, myself, as a resident. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now I'll open it up to the City Council. Is there anyone that would like to speak from the council? Councilman Wilson?
I'm confused here. I understood that we were going to work with the runner district because of the many years of service that we obviously have benefited from, and they've been cooperative over time. We're going to formal, the first priority was to formalize arrangements by written agreement, which I don't think either party really has a problem with. And then, you know, our second priority, well, equal priority, was a cooperative relationship, and we hadn't... was a cooperative relationship, and we hadn't discussed anything in relation to financial benefits, but if we were to do that kind of a thing, or let's call it go-to-guns, it would seem to me that it would be important for us to know what financial benefit would be received on either side. I know that there have been some light discussions in relation to city management so far as making sure that we get our streets paved in conjunction with things that the water district needs to do, which can yield a ton of financial benefit to us. And those kinds of benefits need to be a consideration in any kind of an agreement, but seems like to me we've gone from zero to sixty here, and all of a sudden one mark, and I didn't know that there was any kind of direction like that.
Okay, the city attorney has some...
So I wouldn't support this.
Yes, can you hear me all right? Okay, Madam Mayor Protem, and members of the council, if you'd like, I could provide a staff report on this item.
Okay, go ahead.
Initially, the city reached out to the water company to discuss this franchise fee item through your city manager, and I know at other times some of the council members have been involved in discussions with board members, and they were not fruitful in resolving the matter. So the city council authorized city manager to send in RFP and obtain the services of a water attorney to look at this matter and give advice to the council, which was done. The law firm is Liderlaw, Senico, Gosne, and Cruz, and specifically Andy Turner or Andrew Turner that works for that firm. You remember him from, he assisted us with our negotiations and ultimate resolution of issues concerning the sewer with our neighbor, the city of Colton. So after, in the initial retention of this firm, it was a contract for $7,500 for them to study the situation and advise the council with regard to the feasibility of a franchise fee in this particular situation. The council received a report in that area, and then the city council directed us to bring this item back, which is to retain the same firm further to continue with the exploration of a franchise fee. The anticipation of the council, and there was an addition of $16,000 to the report, which comes out to the $23,500 to the compensation to the firm. Now, that is a not-to-exceeds amount. That isn't necessarily what's going to be spent. The attorney's been directed to go ahead and reach out to the council for the water company and see if these things can be worked out. So that, and the legal steps would be that if something can be worked out with regarding, it's also explore further additional evidence and so on that has to do with it. If something can be worked out, then the legal steps will be taken as to prepare the settlement agreement, or in this case, it would be a franchise agreement, and whatever steps need to be taken to implement a franchise fee if that appears to be what needs to be done. So that's what you hired him to do, and do anything else that's necessary if we aren't able to reach an agreement.
Now, is it appropriate to say which members of the council were briefed and provided direction?
Well, the direction was given at the last council meeting.
Right.
And in attendance, the mayor was not in attendance because, as she did tonight, she recused herself. And Mr. Wilson wasn't available that night, so it would be the remaining three council members who were present and gave direction.
And before, I think you wanted to speak, Mr. Hussey?
Yeah.
Okay. So before we move on there, I just wanted to reiterate that we were told that we haven't quite gotten there to any amicable decision-making, so we're having to take this next step. And this next step does not preclude from us receiving any amicable solutions still yet. Okay, and with that, then I'm going to move over to Councilman Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Would it be advised that we have the city manager explain what the assessment fee is, what's going on in that, because just to let people know out here what, exactly what the fee covers?
Well, at this point, I don't think we have the numbers to give a certain fee, so I would...
Well, I know we have the numbers. Can we give a definition exactly what the fee is, what's it for?
General Duffy, city manager. So the potential franchise fee would consist of the same fee that you would pay for a cable company, gas company, Edison electric company. And in the case of the cable company, along with any water fee, it's actually regulated by the state. So for example, if we were to reach out in agreement to do a franchise fee, we can't just make some number come out of the air. There is a number that's already been determined, and I believe it's no less than 1%, no greater than 2%. And that would be the number that you'd be looking at. I just wanted to also note in this process is that I think that what the council members are saying is absolutely correct. The process that we're going through is that we sent a message to the water company. The water company made certain claims. We then looked at that. We hired an attorney to see if that representation was correct. So our attorney has done the analysis and determined that, okay, if that is correct, then they need to show us that they have that information. That's not adversarial. That's simply trying to get the information. If it determines that the water company's claims are correct, then there's no issue. Then there's no requirement for a franchise fee. If it is determined that they don't have the information, the claim that they have, then that means the city can actually work with the water company to establish a franchise fee. Now, it's not a fee that the city can just decide what number it is. It's actually a fee that's been set. No less than 1%, no greater than 2%.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Duffy, 1% of what?
I believe it's 1% of the gross of their profits.
Of their profits? So it wouldn't have anything to do with value of pipe in the ground or any of that? It would be 1%? 1% to 2% of their revenue?
It's really 1% I believe of the water sales. It's not about assessing the entire organization and then trying to do that. And those are things that, just while you're hiring this attorney to be able to, he's well-versed in this particular area, he'll be able to come back to the council and say, I've had the conversation, I've seen the information, they're correct. Or, you know, they don't have the information, and you guys can proceed. But this is not about litigating right away. This is about trying to, the attorney clearly understands, there is, as Mr. McKeever said, there is a relationship that is, that it's a positive relationship with Riverside Highland Water Company. And as we started down this path, the overall direction that I was given is that we do have a relationship, and we don't want to hinder that relationship. And so we look at this from a business model as we try to proceed.
Mr. Hussey?
For the city attorney, is this too late to try to have dialogue with the water company now, or we're just going to move forward on this part? If they want to come back and say, you know, listen, we don't want to waste the shareholders' money, we don't want to waste this money, let's just talk and take care of this, or is that step, are we beyond that step?
Yeah. Madam Mayor Protem, and members of the council, it's never too late for discussion.
Okay.
I'll ask Mr. McKeever.
Okay. Mr. Councilman Hussey?
Mr. McKeever, can you step up to the podium? Thank you, sir, for coming up. You know, I understand the concerns, and yes, we are shareholders, and, you know, we all have a good working relationship together. And I would like to resolve this, you know, and further dialogue, and still bringing lawyers in here, spending money, and we work together on this. But I think what, you know, we're trying to get to also is to find an answer. Are we, do we have the assessment rights as a city? Do we don't have the assessment rights as a city? Are you willing to work together again on this and forget the lawyers and be open-minded, or are we going to have to go the lawyer route?
To answer any of your concerns, we have always worked diligently with the city on trying to coordinate our main replacement efforts with your street paving efforts and realizing that we can save a lot of money that way. We've done that for as long as I have around. So we, I mean, we're not, we're certainly not running our operation ignoring the needs of the city. And we, and I think I've stated before, that if we need to memorialize those agreements with the city, we certainly don't have any problem with that. Because, and the things that I mentioned here about paying the fees and stuff, that's pretty normal operating stuff. We don't have any problem with that. And if there's a need to actually memorialize that with the city, we don't have any problem with that. Now, something that was alluded to was our early discussions on this. Our original position was that we've been putting pipe in the ground around here since 1898. And the city wasn't incorporated until 1978. We had, a lot of our facilities were existing before the city was, you know, was created. So it was our feeling that we had certain prior rights there. From a legal standpoint, when we got to discussing with the city, there was all kinds of demands made on us about providing legal easement grants for all these rights and everything. And that's just not the way this type of operation is done. Basically, when we as a water company, or any utility for that matter, go into construct a facility, we get a permit to construct a facility within whoever owns the right-of-way. And that's pretty much the only permission-type document that we get to do that. So I don't know of any, any single jurisdiction that actually grants easements. Matter of fact, most jurisdictions refuse to grant easements within their public rights-of-way. They will grant you a permit to be there, a permit to construct the facility, but they will not grant you an easement. Just an example, with this interchange expansion down here, Caltrans accepted our prior rights to our pipelines in that area, and they're relocating our pipelines.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there. We're going down a different path. City attorney, you have something else you want to offer?
Yes. Just to be clear, and also in response to Councilmember Hussey's question, the dialogue that went back and forth, and the letters that were written back and forth between the water company and the city, the water company said, no, they refused to do a franchise. And their attorney wrote a letter saying why. And so our office was involved, and we sent back a letter, because we did the research on it, and we asked for the evidence that the attorney was suggesting why they don't have to have a franchise fee. And so...
Mr. McKeever, you can go ahead and take your seat.
And then, so the original, so the dialogue broke down because there wasn't any movement on the water company, and we're not asking all kinds of evidence. We're asking for the evidence upon which they base their assertion to the city. So the first step that would happen, and if you continue the retention of the water attorney that's before you tonight, will be to converse with their attorney and go over what their attorney said in their letter, and ask for the evidence. And the two of them are both experts in water law, and I'm sure the two of them will be able to come to some kind of conclusion for both entities.
So we're just basically looking here tonight to see where our next step's going to be. The attorney's got to figure this out.
If you retain the water council to continue, the first part will be to get to the bottom of what the facts are. Then the attorney will not take any further action, then to come back to you and tell you where we're at, and then you give further direction.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, should we count this and see if I'm correct? How long have we been engaging on this discussion?
I believe the first letter went out last April.
Okay, so we're approaching one year, while we're being told that it's us that's not willing to collaborate and resolve this. So there's been a series of letters, correct?
Yes, there was.
Have they been stonewalled or challenged, as far as what our standing is on this matter?
That was correct.
Okay, so one of the issues being discussed is the 1898 issue, is our attorney will be looking at that and see if that has actually any validity, if that is true. If that is true, from your perspective, then this isn't moving forward.
Absolutely. That is correct.
But clearly, we were given a report, we provided direction, three of us, that we're able to provide a direction to pursue this, and we're really limited to, because all discussions were stonewalled or didn't happen, and we have a disagreement from step A. So step A is to be resolved, and we have any standing, period, per the arguments that Riverside Highland is putting forth. So if we can, and that, our understanding is going to be, this is not any litigation. The correct term was, this was some kind of legal term, was it?
Legal steps.
Uh-huh.
To resolve the matter.
Right. So there's no jury that's ever going to be involved in any of those kinds of things?
If there were to be, it would be pursuant to the council direction, but I seriously doubt it.
Right. But what the water attorney said is that there's never a jury involved in this kind of thing. This is more just kind of...
Yeah, probably it would not be a jury trial.
Yeah, right. So in this forum, in this approach, provides just getting these kinds of questions, you know, on the table with more punch than ignoring letters or writing letters. So I think it's important that we are the same entity, but we have different stakeholders for different reasons. So what I'm hearing is, we're partners, so because we're partners, we're not going to recognize any franchise standing that you think or you may not have. We're just going to ignore them and proceed. So if we do that, say, with Spectrum, they could come and say, well, Spectrum started in the unincorporated area of Grand Terrace in 1896, so their feeling is that we shouldn't pay a franchise fee.
Well, the different utilities have different laws that guard...
But they can just say, ignore the law.
But we wouldn't.
Yeah, right.
Well, let me reiterate, we are not a public utility. We are a mutual water company, and as such, we are privately-held corporation, and we're a nonprofit corporation. So our, you know, the only thing we're doing is supplying water to our stockholders.
But you're not interested in providing a franchise fee, or else we wouldn't be here today discussing this, correct?
Well, that's correct.
Right.
I mean, it's a mere benefit to us.
So we really don't have the same interests at hand, then?
Well, but we have the same people that are paying our bills.
Well, that includes me.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
So, and it also includes, you said, people that have meters in Colton, Riverside, High Grove.
Well, now, it's my understanding that we can only, you can only charge a franchise fee on revenue generated within the city.
Correct.
So that's what causes another overhead problem for us, because we've got people in four different jurisdictions, and so we can't just add a franchise fee onto our billing rates. We have to bill it separately.
And, okay, so that can be done. Okay, so...
You know, it's really easy to say that can be done. We can do anything if we want to spend all kinds of money on it. And we, quite frankly, we just don't spend our stockholders' money like that.
Well, so say for example, for every dollar you're spending, we're spending a dollar on this conflict.
That's true, and we're spending the same people's dollars.
Yeah, so, okay, so then, if it were true, that... Yeah, so, so, okay, so then, if it were true, that we're just good friends and partners here, and we just wanna do what's best for, for the city, then why are we having this conflict?
Why shouldn't we have this conflict? I mean, we're not in the street maintenance business, we're in the water purveyor business.
Okay, so, and then, so, what I'm gonna say then, is to reiterate with the council, is we've been going through this for a year, we sat and read, received a report, and we agreed collectively, those of us that were able to, that we were gonna take this step. So now I'm hearing that we just wanna say, oh, never mind. So, you know, so we can go down that, that route, but I'm thinking, if we spent the, the effort of a year, and we sat and made a collective decision to ask for this contract to come back, I think we ought at least go the first step and find if there's any standing. And if we don't have any standing, this ends.
Well, you're not gonna, you're not gonna answer that with the first step, because your attorney's gonna have his opinion-
Mr. McKibler, could you please take your seat? This is a council meeting, we, we heard your three minutes already, sir.
I, as I said before, do, am I limited to three minutes? We're actually a, a party to the action here.
We're not in court, that's where we have the attorneys. We're gonna have that discussion, we're not gonna do it here.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so, do we have any further discussion from the city council members? Mr. Reiners?
I tend to agree with Mayor Protem, that we've gone down this path for a long time, and the issue at hand is the revenue stream potentially, and who it rightfully belongs to. And I've never liked when the default answer is, if we do this, you're gonna pay, don't do this, or you're gonna pay. I've never liked that on any level of politics. So I don't think it hurts anything, besides costing us some money to see exactly what the standing is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hussey?
No, that was my question, is to let the residents know that we tried to do this without the lawyers, and then we have to go to the next step, and hopefully, after this next step, we figure out, you know, the dialogue and what we need to go further, if there needs to go any step further. But, yeah, I don't like spending money, but I also like to get, you know, resolve this, because we have been on it for a year, and I agree with the Mayor Protem on this, so thank you.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the contract?
All it is is... I closed it.
Let's see, it was item six.
Motion to approve amendment number one, to the professional services agreement between the City of Gran Terrace and Legalaf Senegal, Gosne and Cruz, LRP, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
You have a second?
Pause it when they're done.
I have a second.
Please vote.
It has to go back to the beginning.
Mayor Protem, motion passes. Councilmember Reiners, Councilmember Hussey votes yes. Mayor Protem votes yes, and Councilmember Wilson votes no. Thank you. Okay, we'll get the air back and take a two-minute break. Our meeting? We'll be resuming our meeting, please take your seats. I know. All right, thank you for coming to order, we will move on to public comment at this time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda, and because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. It may also be, a request may be made for a brief response from staff, and it may be requested that a matter be agendized for a future meeting. I have two requests to speak in front of me, the first one is for, from Robert Kraus.
My name is Robert Kraus, and I live on 22710 Eaton Street Drive. I've been in Gran Terrace for 16 years, and I need, Blue Mountain's been exercise area for me, I started going to Palm Drive. A person there was complaining about the parking on Saturday and Sunday mornings, he was throwing rocks at little old ladies, you guys shut that down. We started going over to Westwood. I've actually talked to the person that lives right by that gate, he put the braces on my daughter. He said, I have no problem with people coming in here, but there's a couple people up here that are on the rich side, and they don't want people parking on their street. And supposedly, they started blocking that area. And that's just, you know, this, you need to stop putting Blue Mountain on everything. If Blue Mountains, you need to put no trespassing on Blue Mountain, off limits, have a fine there, if you're caught in Blue Mountain, we're gonna fine you. You know, this is just getting ridiculous. You know, when, I live right by Terrace View Elementary School. I've taught my kids how to ride a bike on their, on their playground. Now it's blocked off. You know, it's just getting, you know, it's just getting ridiculous how things are coming about. You know, I don't know if you guys, this is my first time here in about two years, and we had a, you know, yeah, I don't wanna get into that part, but I don't know if anybody's... Oh, that's, but, I'm just getting frustrated with the direction that this is sitting, it used to be a friendly place, now everything's blocked off, you know, my kids can't go out and play in the playground, you know, just... Does anybody care if a kid gets hit in the car because he has to play in the street now, because he can't play in the playground? I don't think you guys care. You know, one phone call to the right person can unlock that gate to Blue Mountain, to the playground, but you guys don't. It's just, nobody seems to care anymore. Common sense stuff, you know, it's public property, let us have access to it. You know, and this water tax, call it a tax.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. If you would give a contact number to our city clerk, we'd like to follow up with you, we do have some information about access to Blue Mountain, if you are interested in hearing it. Our next speaker is Penny Radke.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city residents and visitors. I just wanted to let you know that on behalf of the foundation of Gran Terrace, we are going to be doing another GT Cleanup Day, Mr. Hussey, Mrs. McNaboe, on April 22nd, which is gonna be actually Earth Day, which is a really, kinda cool, this time. We do it twice a year, usually in April and October. We're gonna meet over at the CVS parking lot from 8:00 to 12:00. We're asking that community members come out and help, it's a really great opportunity for our youth, too, to get those community service hours. A lot of times, our Boy Scouts, our Girl Scouts, and members from Gran Terrace High School come out. The only thing we ask is that you bring some gloves, maybe a trash bag or two, a rake, maybe, but also, you will have to sign a waiver, and those individuals that are under the age of 14 would have to have a responsible adult with them. It's a great time, and I just really encourage everybody to come out and keep Gran Terrace clean and beautiful.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Radke. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening, Bobby Forbes, 11850 Burns Avenue, Gran Terrace. Doug, my condolences on the loss of your father-in-law. And our community lost two people that I'm aware of in the last couple of weeks, one is Thelma Winkler, and the other was Mike Breckin. We were both longstanding residents of Gran Terrace, and I'm here to know if there's a way to end the meeting on their behalf, or in memory of them, if you haven't already a lot of that. Second, I would like to say that, I lost it, I'm sorry. Okay, that's it, I lost it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Next speaker is Jeff Atwin.
Jeff Atwin, 22594 Eaton Drive. Several weeks ago, I was out back in my, behind my house, on my property, and I found a small drone that crashed into my bedroom window. And so, I was wondering if there was any, if the city had any ordinances regarding drone usage in the neighborhoods. Because when I found this drone, it was, obviously it wasn't mine, and it kinda made me think about various reasons somebody might have a drone flying around my backyard. And so, I mean, what would they be looking for in a way? It's just something I was wondering about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atwin. Mr. City Manager?
We can sort of check with the Sheriff's Department, they have the new laws passed about drone use, so I'll check in with Lieutenant Wolf and, and find out what our rules are, and if we need to pass any local ordinance in addition to what's, what's out there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Charles Hornsby, and I live at 22594 Eaton Drive. And I used to live on Brentwood Street. I'd like to reiterate what Jeff Atwin said, the water company's been great about, you know, once upon a time it'll break, but they've always come out right away to fix it. And at first, I didn't know what you guys were talking about, as far as the franchise fee goes. And then this gentleman had a somewhat courageous statement that was, I think you said, revenue stream. Which is, isn't it just money that the water, you wanna make them a franchise, so they'll have to give you either 1% or 2% of their profit or their gross revenue to the city, is that correct? You can answer.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't answer that.
The franchise fee is basically just gonna be a tax imposed by the city on the water company. And what I, what I don't think you guys think about is that Gran Terrace has always been a little frustrated by the fact that we don't have a lot of business in town, which we don't. We have two or three restaurants of consequence, we have a couple stores, we have a grocery store, we have a few shops. But Gran Terrace has never enjoyed a good business climate, and as a result, the city's been tampered in growth. But if you start to take, the more money you take out of the citizen, the less money they're gonna have to spend, whether it's here, or Riverside, or San Bernardino, or the mountains. So you may think that 1% or 2% is gonna be a pile of money, but it's just, it's just less money for the people that live here to spend on whatever it might be. And I would like comment from some of you, after I finish speaking, after whoever else finishes speaking, regarding the fact that this is either, it's either a tax or it's not. But my suspicion is, is that there's gonna be a certain amount of money that the water company has to pay you if this goes through. And guess who that's gonna come from? It's not gonna come from the sky, it's not gonna come from redevelopment money, it's gonna be on all of our bills. And that's just gonna be less money in everybody's pocket, which means that business is even gonna decline further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hornsby. So, anybody else wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing note takers, I will close public comment and come back to my council member colleagues for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Brian Reiners.
This one will be quite short. Last weekend, I attended the grand opening of the Cheer Factory with a couple of my colleagues here on the council, and it was really heartwarming to see, because that is what we need, we need to see hard-working people with good ideas and the ambition to just take a shot and open up a business. I think that local communities are built on small business, so it was an event that I really enjoyed attending. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Reiners. Councilmember Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you everybody that came out here tonight, and wants your opinions, it's, you know, it's not on deaf ears, appreciate it. Like, Brian, so you know, we tended to cheer, grand opening is a fun event, and the girls there, you know, they, they liked the audience, they did a really good job, you know, it's really neat to see that. Also, I attended the Gran Terrace Little League opening ceremony, I got to say the prayer, you know, it was a really special event, especially when you go out there and you see that when you were a coach and your kids were that small, you know, and how they grew up in a marching, one father who walked out in the field with his son, that I coached baseball, too, so it's really neat to see, plus realize I'm getting old now, so. And then, of course, you know, they had a lot of good food vendors there, so I had to buy some food, and then I figured I had to go to the high school band thing and bought some more food, but they had a really good music, they had the Battle of the Bands. So there's a lot of stuff to do here in Gran Terrace, you know, if you wanna, you know, support the local schools and the leagues, you know, it's really neat to see. And, you know, and then, of course, Mr. Johnson's class that he had here is, you know, I got to see- to see that more hands-on when I went to one of the community cabinet meetings, but that's really neat. And then I just want to thank the Sheriff's Department for their quick response on the house that was broken into four doors from my house. You know, I know you guys got the suspects, I really appreciate, you know, and I appreciate the residents who run the neighborhood watch who also help, you know, identify the people who broke in. So, you know, once again, it's a community working together and taking care of each other, so. Thank you, Sheriff's Department for doing that and thank you, everybody, for coming out and God bless. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be short. I really do appreciate all the condolences and wishes in relation to my father-in-law. This has been a tough road. We do have an aging population. The way we look at it at this point in our family is, is we're the next up. I am 63 years old, so it does kind of shine a new light on circumstances and it takes, I can tell you that it takes a great deal of effort to do that kind of circumstance and work with the various agencies and try to ensure that a person finishes life with a, some kind of equality of life. So, thank you. Also, I got a chance to attend the groundbreaking for a really important business within the city, and that is the animal hospital. The doctors that are involved in the animal hospital over there, it's on the corner of Michigan and Commerce?
Commerce.
Yeah, Commerce, by the way. Anyway, Mayor and I got an opportunity to attend the groundbreaking. For a change, it was 140 degrees outside, so that was good. And really enjoyed the, the brief presentation and more than anything else, got in, really got a chance to enjoy the excitement of the family business and putting things together and making something, you know, come together and creating something. Maybe it's my own personal view, but I think we're willfully short on creating situations. I was jazzed to see that the kids came over from the engineering class and, and did some of those things to demonstrate that it is integral for us in this country to understand that we have to culture not just paper, but things that we produce. And I think it's terrific that we've got a new business, an old business that's going to stay a new business. And they're also bringing some retail as well, so that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't attend any groundbreakings or Little League because since it was spring break, we took our grandchildren for a week at the Carlsbad, so we have to babysit full-time and we're going to do it in a better location than sitting at home. Attended the annual city community conference and I really was, I've always been impressed with Dr. Lucy Jones, a seismologist, and she really brought to bear the risk of a future earthquake that would happen in the inland communities. She discussed the fault lines, the three major fault lines that intersect at Cajon Pass where we have access from the states of Nevada and, excuse me, from, yeah, Nevada. And that's important, which I'll get to in a minute, and where there's major gas lines, rail lines, all these things that keep Southern California functioning. She was stating to us that she is retired now from, from the government and one of her stints was with the City of LA getting them prepared. It's very important for our inland communities to understand, as opposed to events like the 94 North Ridge quake, we provided the mutual aid, meaning the fire people and any folks that we could send out there, provided aid to them. When we have an event here in the inland communities, we're going to have a problem because the roads connecting for Arizona and Nevada and those regions that are going to come and have to help us are going to have to figure out how to get here. Whereas in, the LA folks are not going to be able to provide us mutual aid because they're going to be busy with their own problems. So it was quite sobering, and it was also quite sobering to understand that we really don't have a full plan for dealing with this. She also told us, for example, in Christ Church, they showed a picture where it was a fairly modern urban community and someone happened to be on a hill when the earthquake struck and took a picture. So not many buildings came down during the initial quake, but what happened was as the days passed, they had to go and red-tag many of the buildings and demolish them. They showed a picture how it looked after that took place and it looked like it returned to farmland. It was quite sobering. And this part, I, to, I mean, it cannot be, I think, pounded into us policymakers when we had last month a full workshop on being prepared and also the global thing in all these communities. It was just a really important thing and it was just invaluable to understand. And I'm going to, I don't want to talk a long time, but one of the cute things was that in the 94 quake, that was one month before cell phones were, were put into use. So people were able to adjust with being cut off on communications. But in Japan, when that happened, was people were able to deal with not taking showers, not having water, not really having the food, but when they couldn't restore cell service within three days, mass numbers of population moved out of the disaster area because they could not stand the inability to have cell tower use and communications with their family members and business. So, very good information. The former Sandbag, which was a transportation agency, now House Council of Government Powers, so it's going to be interesting how we move forward as inland communities on, on dealing with this. And with that, I'll just announce that Sunday I had a great grandson born and as we speak, I'm waiting for a great granddaughter to be born. So we have a lot of moving and shaking in my family tree right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And congratulations to you and your family, Mayor Protem, on the birth of your grandson. I also attended the city county conference on the 16th and 17th. I enjoyed Dr. Lucy Jones's presentation. The thing that I remember her talking about is not only are there numerous fault lines and that the San Andreas Fault runs through the Cajon Pass, intersecting numerous times with petroleum, natural gas and water. So there's the danger of fires as well as us being cut off from water if we are going to be dependent on water from the state water project at all. So she was advocating that we have shut off valves for each of these systems to minimize the, the risk that is associated with that. And then also she talked about, it's great to have reinforced structures, but if you don't have a, a thought for how your water conveyance system is going to work, that's going to cause problems as well. There were a couple of other breakout sessions. One of the ones that I attended was the sharing economy and local government. The discussion to me pertained to us possibly when they spoke of Airbnb or short-term rentals within residential communities and this is people renting out their homes or a room of their home. And that can pose problems for the neighbors, that can be disruptive in many ways, but it can also be a draw on resources with no economic benefit to the city to provide those resources. At the time, I thought, well, I wonder if we really even have any Airbnb rentals within Grand Terrace? And then when I checked, I found that there are three listed. And one of them is actually for RV parking behind somebody's gate in their backyard. So, looking at what can be done there is, is very interesting. I imagine if it's only one or two, it's probably not out of hand and if we don't have the neighbors complaining, that's probably a good thing, but it's certainly something to keep an eye on. We have a, we had a presentation on police cameras. Those are the cameras that the, the police officers are, are now wearing on their uniforms. We had the Rialto Police Department discussing their program. And their determination at the time was that there are a number of people everywhere now that have the cameras on their cell phones, as well as video cameras on buildings. And they believed that their police officers should also have an opportunity to videotape from their perspective any incident that happens. And so they, they talked about the evolution of their particular program, what they found important, and they have been seeing that there are a number of excessive force claims that have gone away based on the video evidence that they have. Before it was a, a us versus them, or he said, he said, or he said, she said, depending on the incident, but now when they have the video coverage from the police officers to go with any video coverage that somebody else is offering, they're finding that it's more of a complete showing of what actually happened with the event and they are very happy with their decision to go that route and we're encouraging other, other agencies to do so as well. Lastly, we ended with a economic overview by Christopher Thornberg, who's the Director of UCR Riverside Center for Economic Forecasting and Development. He also has a economic consulting company called Beacon Economics. He gave us a little bit of an outlook on the area and first and foremost stating that as, as much as California might be very expensive for businesses to operate in, it's still growing faster than the rest of the United States as far as job growth and income growth and one of the issues that we are having though is housing and we need to look at ways to bring more housing into California. He talked about the inland empire being one of the fastest areas within California for economic growth. And so that puts us in the inland area ahead of many regions within the United States, which is a nice place to be. He also talked about how he generally looks at economic forecasting with an eye to politics. And when he just recently looked at his political forecasting for the coming year, he was really counting on a Clinton presidency. And so the fact that Donald Trump was elected president, he's not really too sure at this point what that truly means for his forecast, but he does need to go back and take a look at that. He did show us that the real median household income for our region has been increasing as have taxable sales, which is all good news for us at this point. The other part of this conference that's good, other than the speakers and the quality of, of subjects that they discuss, is the opportunity to discuss common interests and common problems with elected officials and, and staff members at the county level as well as in other cities. I had an, an opportunity to speak with our county assessor, Bob Dutton, and he's expressed the, the desire to come and speak with us at the council meeting and talk about property values within our county. I thought that might be an interesting thing if, if we could have him come and do that. I also attended the ribbon cutting at the Cheer Factory. I was very happy to see Jacqueline Anne, who is cheerleader for the Ontario Ring and Hockey Team and has done so many things within the city. Her parents and, and she have stepped up to decide to, to pursue her passion as a way to not only work with the children, but they offer choreography, tumbling, adult stretching, fitness and private lessons. And they also are going to have some of their teams performing in parades and in competition. So that, that will be nice to see and that will be another way to showcase our talent here within Grand Terrace as well as the talent that we have coming out of our high schools. I recently applied for a, a membership on the Executive Committee of our California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. It's a nine-member panel of representatives from each of the member organizations and it's, it's over 100 member organizations. The Executive Committee meets monthly to review approved policies related to the Joint Power Insurance Authority's programs, services, and they also carry out ex officia responsibility for claims, budget, bylaw and JPA and personnel committees. They had one of their members who was going to resign because of the limit of her term in office, so they put out a call for those that were interested and had review panels. I, I applied, I was interviewed and I was selected. So I think that this is going to give us an opportunity for our city to see into the way that the JPIA provides coverage, how we can best approach the coverage for our city and to make sure that we're taking advantage of the educational opportunities that they offer that will help to limit our risk exposure in the city. I enjoyed also attending the Emergency Animal Clinic Groundbreaking. I will echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Wilson, but I will also go on to say that I spoke with their construction contractor and he could not say enough about his interaction with city staff, specifically Sandra Molina. And with the way that our staff had the ability to move this project along the permitting process, he said he's not seen a city move through the process or help a, a project move through their processes at the pace in which our staff was able to help them in the 20 years that he's been contracting. So kudos to our staff for helping to make this project that was in a really precarious situation for the owners because the place where they are is going to be demolished. So, you know, it was, it was nice to hear that kind of feedback about our city staff. I had the opportunity to attend a VIP reception with our State Attorney General at the invitation of our Assembly Member, Council, our Assembly Member Reyes. That took place at the San Bernardino Valley College. It was a very interesting event. I was interested to hear the remarks that the State Attorney General had to say and then to, to talk with others who attended the event as well. And I appreciate the invitation by our Assembly Member. And two more items. I had a meeting with the Palm Springs Neighborhood Watch Office. Well, there's a chairman of one of their Neighborhood Watch Groups, but also the city has a manager of, of the Office of Neighborhoods. We went with Grand Terrace residents Anthony Cortez and Johan Gallo, who are our Grand Terrace Community Watch members. We were able to listen to the Chairman Jim King, who is a former Grand Terrace resident, talk to us about his experience in his neighborhood where they had 32 break-ins in a, a number of weeks around Christmas time and beyond. And they decided to reconstitute what they had originally had as a Neighborhood Watch. They have had much success and he wanted to share with a new Neighborhood Watch within Palm Springs that was forming, but he also invited us to come out and hear from him the things that they've been doing that have helped them to be such a success. The city of Palm Springs started with about four neighborhood groups, they are now up to 43. Of course, they have over 43,000 residents within Palm Springs, so they have quite a few neighborhoods. But the, I think the remark that came from that particular meeting that really struck me was when the, the mayor had come in to visit with the group for a little while and he remarked that they have seen a 25% reduction in property crime within the city that they attribute to these Neighborhood Watch Groups. So as important as the police protection is, they do really see that it makes a difference in property crime when they have the Neighborhood Watches functioning at a high level. So that was, that was a really good thing to hear and I'm hoping that some of the things that our Community Watch members took away from that are things that could be implemented within our community as well. And lastly, there is a area code overlay. What do I want to say? Well, 909 is running out of phone numbers. We saw this not too long ago and the area code of 951 was born. What they're looking at now is perhaps an overlay within the 909 area code that would be a little bit different implementation. And so there are some public meetings associated with this particular overlay program that they are proposing. On April 4th and April 5th, they will have public meetings. April 4th at the Ruben Campos Community Center on 1717 West 5th Street in San Bernardino, that's at 6:00 PM. And on April 5th, 2017, at 11:00 AM at the Redlands Community Center at 111 West Lagonia Avenue, Redlands, California, they will have an opportunity for the public to come and hear about the plan. They are expected to use up all the remaining numbers in the 909 area code by March of 2019, so they have a little bit of time to work on this. But this will make a difference in the way that we progress within our community. So I will stop right there, because I think I've said just about enough, and I'll move back to our agenda. On public hearings, we have none, so we'll move to unfinished business. On public hearings, we have none, so we'll move to unfinished business. And the first item of our unfinished business, item number eight, is a professional service agreement with J. H. Douglas and Associates for Planning Services related to 40 acres north of Vivienda Avenue. May we have a staff report, please?
Just a short presentation here. So this item is for the City Council, is a professional service agreement with J. H. Douglas and Associates. And the proposal is for them, for J. H. Douglas, Mr. Douglas, to provide planning services to the city to identify properties to be rezoned within an area we talked about back in February. This is the area north of Vivienda. So we will identify the properties to be rezoned. It consists of 40 acres, but at this time, part of the service would be determined if it's the full 40 acres or less than that. So the proposal would be to rezone to allow agricultural-type uses with ancillary residential. So what that means is that the primary use is going to be agricultural, and secondary would be the residential component. The service would also establish development standards and also provide a general plan amendment. And back on February 14th was the last time that the council had a discussion on this item. At that time, the recommendation or the direction that staff was seeking was to have the council determine whether this project would be prioritized and whether the council would then bear the cost of the planning service. And at the conclusion of that discussion, staff was directed to return with the professional services contract to implement the planning service. And so that was the direction that was provided to staff at the conclusion of that item, and so this is what we're bringing forward to the council. But I also wanted to provide a little bit of background. If the council may recall, at the last meeting, we provided this area that identified the parcels and the property owners. And there was discussion by members of the public. We did provide outreach to the property owners, and this area in particular, the property owner was not in concurrence with the rezoning, so that's why I indicate that the first step would be for Mr. Douglas to determine the scope of the changes for this area. And really, that's my presentation. I'm happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
A 25% contingency, pretty stiff. $20,000, I think we'd had some discussion that we're going to try to keep this thing down a little bit, considering that this is work that was kind of like old homework. So I'm surprised that it's $20,000, including a $5,000 contingency.
I can respond to that, Councilmember Wilson. The cost proposal that was provided on the 14th was approximately $2,000 less. The contingency at that time was $3,000. But I anticipate that there may be the need for additional meeting either with the Planning Commission or the City Council as we go through this process of determining the areas. And so I asked, in the event that there's an additional workshop or meeting needed, that that be incorporated into the contingency. And that's the basis for that.
Any further questions, Councilmember Wilson? Any questions at this time? I have one question. Director Molina, when are we scheduled to review our general plan again?
At this particular time, we don't have it on schedule. Our plan was adopted approximately seven years ago, so we should start looking at when we want to go back and reevaluate the elements.
And would this be a cheaper process if it was part of the general plan review?
Not necessarily. The general plan, we could evaluate this particular area. When the general plan is reevaluated, the scope of work may or may not necessarily include changes to the map. But this particular project or this service also includes the zoning changes and the development standards that we'd put in place.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go to public comment now, and I have a request to speak by Ann Wade Hortonsby.
Good evening, Council. I live at 22594 Eaton Drive, and I'm commenting on that picture that just disappeared. That property was agricultural at one time, and they actually raised some pretty nice horses on that property. And I now have my horses at the Maxinoff Ranch, and I use it all the time to go riding. That property was rezoned in 1984, and it hasn't had a thing on it since. I mean, it's just been basically pretty much wasteland, and we all work in that area to kind of clean it up. Nothing's gone through. The manhole project didn't go through, and nothing that's been discussed has basically gone through. And basically, it's an easement for the electric company, which is one of the reasons nothing can come under it. I am absolutely for rezoning that personally, and so are most of the people that live in that area. I mean, all of the people that I've talked to would like to see it rezoned. And I know that Jeff McConnell has gotten a piece that's just wonderful to go by, because he's taken very good care of it. It's the nicest-looking piece around there, actually. So all I wanted to say was, I understand that it's going to cost money to do whatever you do with it. But you, Mayor, brought up the fact that we're going to probably see an increase even more than in High Grove possibly in housing. And I see nothing wrong, and I don't think anybody else can see much wrong with maybe designating that as a green space of some sort. Now, I don't know what that would entail. I mean, you know, we could envision a pond and lakes and beautiful green trees and stuff, or just hiking trails and cleaning it up a bit and doing something that would keep me allowed to ride my horses through it. And I have carriages that I drive there, too. So that's what I do there all the time. But that's because I can, okay? But if we could actually develop it, it would be accessible to everybody that would want to do it. As you know, the train tracks have been taken up, and so that's a lovely trail to drive my carriage on and take my horses on, and by the way, all the other horses on the Maxinoff Ranch as well. But the thing is that a lot of other people could use it, too. And for that reason, it needs to be rezoned. It's not being used for industry. It won't be used for industry without a huge fight again, so I'm all for doing it as fast as possible. So I don't know how you're going to finance it, but as far as the zoning, that's something you could do right away, and then we can maybe think about what to do with it, okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Hortonsby.
Thank you.
Next request to speak is from Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Madam. Jeff Allen, Burnwood Street in Grand Terrace. My concerns with this issue are the cost of the rezoning. It appears that the city is the one that's going to bear the cost of the rezoning. Is there a way for the city to recoup that cost? That's my one concern. And who's going to be responsible for the infrastructure upgrades needed for the increased residences down there? Is the water main and the sewer main, are they big enough? The roads, we know, are a disaster going down through there. So that sort of thing. Who's going to, will the city have to now be responsible for upgrading all of that? And also, will the city have to assume any liabilities for allowing construction of residences in a floodplain? Those are just the concerns I have. I think it's a wonderful idea. I agree with Ann that Jeffrey has a nice-looking piece of property, but those are my concerns with the city's involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. So anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
It seems that Jeffrey's property is the only one that is at issue for, that needs to be zoning. The other people don't want it all around him. Masking off and rich already live on the property, so I think they're safe. I don't know if I'm speaking or not. But the property that is the Davis Trust landscaper owns is for sale. His property up on the hill is for sale. How is that going to affect him to be changing the zoning for something that he bought the way that it is now, and you're going to change zoning on it? Is it to his benefit, not to his benefit? I don't think he's here. I don't know the man personally, so I have no idea if he's been at any of the meetings regarding this. I worry about the flood zone, the industrial. There's major railroad tracks there running along Lakkadina, and I know that the Horse Ranch is down there. It's my neighbor, too. And so I would like to see something happen with it. Good for the neighborhood. But if you allow Jeffrey to do one house there, one house, he'll live there and have his farm. But I think the intention is to build multiple homes there, and is that really going to be okay with the power lines? I just went through a study with the property on Vista Grande Way with the power lines. I never had any idea that they have this survey available to you for free. They'll come out and check the EMFs that are on your house. And so that was an eye-opener for me to see that, because there's a lot of people that own really nice properties and have beautiful homes out here on Vista Grande and Grand Terrace Road. They might be surprised by what they see with this study. And so those power lines are close. So it's not that I'm just against anything happening down there. I just want it to be smart, and I don't want the city of Grand Terrace to take on the responsibility for any lawsuits or deaths or anything that might happen there, because you take something from industrial to residential. That is a concern that I have. And there was an occupant at that home until she sold it to the manhole builders. She lived there in that one house that he has and raised dogs down there. I don't know what else she had there, but I know she had rutweilers. So that's my biggest concern. It's not just to be a naysayer. I'm worried about your set in precedence and the what-ifs. So I'm worried with what-ifs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. I see we have another speaker.
For the record, Jeffrey McConnell, I can answer many of these concerns people seem to have. Janice Maxinoff couldn't make it because her daughter didn't show back up in time, and Janet always comes with Janice. The five acres to the east of my property, west of my property that I refer to, Mr. Kevin Davis, he's selling that property, and I'll tell you what his stance is, because I've had many conversations with him. He's fed up with the city of Grand Terrace and trying to develop down there. Do the property owners down there interested in changes to agriculture? Oh, hell, yeah, because they're sick and tired of living in fear of another manhole builders coming into town and destroying a neighborhood. The neighbors above me, and some of them aren't here because they're out of town also, they're constantly in fear of dust, diesel, and everything blowing, because of Santa Ana's blow from the north, right into their neighborhood, right up the terrace. And there's a bleeding, there's a lot of wind there, if you've ever been there. So it is a flood zone. If you're worried about somebody dying in a house in a flood zone, somebody can die in an industrial building in a flood zone. What's good for the neighborhood? Yes. What kind of development? Well, I'll tell you, the development, the reason for changing this is to create incentives for somebody to come down there and build ranchettes. Okay? Because what is the city benefiting from empty land? Very little. I've been to many meetings here, planning commission meetings, where city, and other cities, too, they create development incentives for somebody to come and invest their money and develop it, and the city benefits later on to recoup their investments through property tax. Riff tops, as I've discussed many times in the past, generate a lot more property tax than raw land. So the point, my original idea was to create little mini ranchettes, because people who couldn't, like old Eddie Alberts, who want to retire on green acres, they want to come down and have their little ranchette, build a ranch, property tax goes up, agricultural use. And if we can create the opportunity, like Redlands has all over the place, of an opportunity to sell their, your farm, where is their farm? Whatever you create on the farm, whether it's flowers, alpacas, or in my case, fruits and vegetables, and chickens, eggs, whatever, then people will come and visit. It'll be a destination place. We could have a pumpkin patch down there. As a matter of fact, I've already planted over 500 pumpkin seeds in my garden, which I'm planting. And so I encourage this, obviously, and I hope that it's done before harvest time, otherwise I won't be able to share it with the people of Grand Terrace. So also to correct the record, it was me, Janice Maxinoff, and Katie Guthrie. The three of us came to the counter. The staff report says a resident, and we keep asking, please correct the record, it's not a resident that came, it's three people came. As a matter of fact, the entire neighborhood down there wants this to change, so we no longer have any more future battles with like the legs of the manhole battle, which are a total waste of staff time and property owners' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing no takers, I will close public comment, and I would like to ask Director Molina if you would address the issue of infrastructure upgrades, and if homes are built or any kind of development of any kind is built down there, who would be responsible for upgrades to the infrastructure?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So this item is a planning service with regard to putting the designations in place to allow for the ranchette homes with agriculture. So as far as the actual development, let's say a property owner came in and wanted to subdivide 10 acres into one-acre ranchettes. That process has its own entitlements, subdivision map for the subdivision. And the infrastructure at that time would be evaluated as far as what is needed to support that project, and the developer would be responsible for the infrastructure improvements.
Okay. Thank you. And so what's before us tonight is actually a contract to not change the zoning, but to investigate highest and best use?
Madam Mayor, what's before the council would be to look at rezoning the property, to rezone the property and amend the general plan, to look at this particular use that was discussed, which is the agricultural with the ranchettes. The scope of work is not, does not include looking at the highest and best use for those 40 acres.
Mr. City Manager.
Just for clarity purposes, so before the property can be rezoned, will the item come back to the council or go to the Planning Commission, the report?
Yes. Yes, thank you. That would be the process. If the council were to approve the contract to move forward, the consultant would do the workshops with the property owners. The general plan amendment, the zone change, the development standards would be established, and there would be public hearings, one before the Planning Commission to consider the changes and then make a recommendation to the City Council, and one before the City Council to, excuse me, to evaluate the commission's recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. May I approach him?
Yeah, I don't remember everything, but I did have to ask. So, staff, now we approved, we listened to public input about whether we should prioritize this, the merits of it, that kind of thing. So now we're relitigating that again, when this item is just saying, now here's the contract, because you don't have authority to give a contract for $25,000 without City Council approval. So it just seems like, as a policy body, if we keep relitigating everything that we decided on, we're not going to get very far ahead. And it's not fair to the citizens that came to the last meeting that, you know, for them to have to come back or they're unable to come back, if people have the expectation that this was what this was again. This was just, we said okay, and you went and you got the contract, because it's a bidding process, of $25,000, it was over your authority to just execute.
Would you like to make a motion, Madam Mayor Proton?
Okay. So I move adoption of the recommendation to prove a contract with J. H. Douglas and Associates in the amount not to exceed $20,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and to make any amendments necessary to complete the project.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Please vote.
Mayor, motion passes. Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson vote yes. Mayor Proton votes yes, and the mayor votes yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item nine, which is a professional services agreement with We'll move to item nine, which is a professional services agreement with Evan Brooks Associates for preparation and submittal of an urban greening program grant application. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This item before the council is to direct staff to submit a grant application for the urban greening program. That's a grant program that's currently accepting applications. To approve a contract with Evan Brooks Associates to, in the amount of $12,500, to prepare and submit the grant and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. So since 2006, with Assembly Bill 32, which spoke about reduction of greenhouse gases, the state legislature has adopted subsequent statutes to further reduce those emissions. And most recently, with regard to one of those statutes, they also establish a funding source to look at grants to reduce these greenhouse gas emissions. And so one of the programs that's out there right now is the urban greening program. So this program looks at the reduction of greenhouse gases, and it can be done in a number of ways, but specifically has to plant trees to reduce the carbon emissions, reduce vehicle miles traveled through bikeways, pedestrian trails, and reduce building energy use. Projects that meet these requirements would be more competitive than those that don't. The project that we're proposing to move forward will include bike and pedestrian trails, including connections to the Santa Ana River Trail. These pedestrian and bike trails would connect schools, shopping centers, also adjacent cities in the region through the use of the Santa Ana Regional Trail. It proposes to repurpose rail lines by making connections again to the river and also create open spaces. One of the criteria for the proposed grant is that it would benefit disadvantaged communities. And a significant portion of the city, this area north of Barton Road and west of the freeway, is within a disadvantaged community. And so the project that we would set forth would emphasize projects within the, within this area. And now this is a very organic process. We were looking at this aerial map and how we would want to scope out this project. And what we are proposing is, again, here is, sorry, here's Barton Road. And so we would look at trails along Barton Road, repurposing the abandoned rail line here to connect to the Santa Ana River Trail. This would connect to other areas in the region. We would look to a connection to the park, because that's also something that the grant wants to look at. We would also look at creating an open space area at this location, creating an open space area up in here near the Edison. All this area here at Mount Vernon and the canal is Edison property, so we would work with them to create some space. So the planting of trees makes the grant more competitive. And so, again, this was really just a very organic brainstorming session. We provided this to the consultant. That's what's in the scope of work. I also provided to the council a revised scope. What I wanted to make sure was in the scope was that this program allows applicants to submit a one-page concept proposal, and that's due by April 11th. And the agency will look at that proposal and tell us whether it's a go or no go. And so if we're told it's a no go, then we stop at that point. We don't incur any more costs. But if it's feasible, then we'll move forward with the application, if the council so directs us to do so. And so with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any comments.
Any questions for staff at this time?
I've got a comment, but not a question.
Okay, I'll come back for your comment, then. Are there any requests to speak from the public at this time? Okay. Seeing no takers, I'll come back to council. And Councilmember Hussey, you said you have a comment, and then Mayor Proton.
Senator, thank you for preparing this report. My comment, I wish the gentleman was still here, that the city is working on stuff to make like we had trials and stuff. I mean, if the public just listened to what we have, what we're doing, because this would have, you know, I know Mr. Duffy or the mayor, you said to get in contact with the gentleman afterward, so maybe we could let him hear this. But, you know, we're working on this, and I appreciate the city staff doing this to, you know, betterment our city. And I just wish that, you know, everybody got the facts before they hear stuff and listen to what we have, what we have going on here. We're trying to do good things for the city. So that's just my comment right there.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey, Mayor Proton.
Yes, I want to thank you and all the staff for this excellent work. I also want to reiterate Mr. Hussey's comments that, you know, staff, our city manager hit the ground running on the trailhead and the park needs for this community. And that's going on two years that you've been here. So this is, you know, and our staff goes out and they deal with the residents and the different conflicts on using the amenities in this community. And this has been going on for two years. And this is an opportunity to help fund some of that. And I just want to say, it's an excellent program. It ties into the agenda item that we just talked about, as far as, you know, we have land that's not really useful for some needs, but it's right there by the Santa Ana River Trails and would be a great part and principal element to this. And if anybody has a chance not to go through the entire agenda, but there's a piece in here, the service proposal and what they've done and what they kind of envision for this community, and I would assure you to go to the website and read that. It's just really an outstanding thing. And this is something that's really a great amenity and a page-turner for this community. And I want to thank all of you for making this happen, and I hope we're successful with this. Thank you.
And would you like to make a motion?
Oh, okay. And also I just want to say, looking at my phone because of progress of the baby, and the baby apparently looks like it's not going to come tonight. I make a motion to, one, direct staff to submit a grant application to the urban greening program, and, two, approve a contract with Evan Brooks Associates Incorporated in the amount of $12,500 to prepare and submit an urban greening program grant, and, three, authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Mayor, motion passes. Councilmembers Reiners, Hussey, and Wilson vote yes. Mayor Proton votes yes, and the mayor votes yes.
All right, thank you. Move to item 10, which is award of contract for traffic signal maintenance on call emergency Mr. French, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Proton and council members. This is for the award of the signal maintenance contract and emergency on-call services. We recommend that the, we award the contract to St. Francis Electric for the maintenance and on-call services and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. This goes with the 2030 Vision Statement. Goal number two with maintain public safety. Some background. The contract originally awarded by the council in November 2013. And contractor's been on board in that contract through the one year and had a one-year extension. And we had to go through a six-month extension to get the contract out to bid. We went out on March 1st in 2017. So the contract is for maintenance and emergency service for seven signals in the city. I guess, can you, if you can see, and there's supposed to be green X's.
Do you have a pointer that you could point those out?
Yep. Sorry, I'm shaky. So, yeah, from Michigan and Barton, and then there's the signal at the shopping center, State of Brothers, and then one at Canal, then at Mount Vernon and Barton, and then up to Preston. And then the other signal is at De Berry and Mount Vernon.
Okay.
So the original contract was awarded to Siemens based on lowest bid at the time. And they bid again on this contract. We did have two bidders. And that was from St. Francis Electric and Siemens. And you could see, St. Francis came in with a little bit lower bid. And so the recommendation is to award St. Francis the contract. The scope of the work includes some quarterly and routine preventative maintenance on the signals, as well as emergency work should the signals malfunction. At this time, the staff is recommending the council award a three-year contract in the amount not to exceed $10,000 annually for the maintenance and on-call services. I'm sorry, I did the scope. This is just referring to the scope of the work that's covered in the contract. Again, it's a three-year with two one-year extensions. And if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does council have any questions, staff? Councilmember Hussey?
I don't know if you said Litten and Rancho, because when I first got on the council, we agreed on the maintenance for the traffic signal. Was that part of on the contract? I might have missed it.
Litten.
That's on Lockadina.
Litten, Lockadina. Is that on there? Is it on this contract? Litten and Lockadina, yeah, that's across the freeway on the other side.
I just want to make sure we're in good standing with our agreement. Okay.
Councilmember Hussey? I remember the reference that you're making. I'm thinking that the City of Colton is going to maintain it, and we're giving them.
And we're just standing there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we just agreed to give them funds towards that one.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, though. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item?
For the record, Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Willman Avenue. This is kind of a strange request, but it came from Deputy Spears, who I have many conversations with, because he seems to visit my neighborhood quite frequently down there, down by the Tressels. He says, oh, why are they up there? Why can't they clean the, at least once every two months, clean the camera lenses on the LPR cameras? And I realize there's probably only one set right now, and I don't know if these guys can do it, but it brought up another question. Maybe, and I don't remember the agreement with original, the other cameras that we have, have you considered keeping in mind that they do get dusty and that would affect the quality over time of future necessity needs of our other cameras? Just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? All right. Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council, and I will ask Mr. City Manager, do we have a program in place for cleaning cameras?
We do not, but we certainly, at any request, we can certainly have the installer come out and do that. We don't have the, we don't have the lift ourself, but we can certainly, we can do that. But we monitor the camera pictures weekly, and I haven't had a complaint that the lenses were dirty. I do know that when the rain gets on it during the rainy, during the actual rain, while it's still wet, the picture's not as clear, because, excuse me, especially at night when the lights shine, you get a glare there. But during the normal day, I haven't had that concern, but I'll certainly talk with the sheriff's department to find out if they have that issue.
Okay.
You can use Rainat or something like that.
There you go.
Okay.
I'm just telling you, I experienced it. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Any other comments at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. French, for your report, and I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion to award a contractor agreement to St. Francis Electric LLC for traffic signal maintenance and on-call emergency services, and, two, authorize our city manager to execute the contract and any necessary amendments for this contract.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Councilmembers Reiners and Hussey vote yes. Mayor Proton votes yes. Mayor Yvonne votes yes.
And Mr. Wilson is absent.
And Councilmember Wilson is absent.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item 11. Review proposed procedure and direct staff to recommend ordinance revisions to implement and issue revocable encroachment permits for new and existing structures in the public right-of-way. May we have a staff report, please?
Mayor, I'm going to actually help out Mr. French and Wilson, because I have the history, so we'll be a tag team in this particular process.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Hello again, Mayor and city council members. Yep. This is an item to review the procedure. We have a proposed procedure, but we will need some direction to update the present encroachment permit ordinance to implement this. So we would like to review the proposed procedure for issuance of a revocable encroachment permit for new and existing structures in the public right-of-way. And we would like the council to direct staff to bring back some verbiage for the ordinance or the introduction. This item complies with the 2030 Vision to ensure our fiscal viability by protecting the city from potential litigation, as well as to maintain, goal number one, and goal number two would be to maintain public safety and to ensure our residents continue to enjoy an outstanding quality of life here in the city. So, let's see. Some background, the city is charged with protecting, governing, monitoring the public road right-of-way, as described in the Streets and Highways Code for the State of California. For the code, the city has a responsibility to keep the roads open and allow pedestrian access and for public utilities use. And when usually residents want to encroach into that area, or actually anybody in that, for that matter, we do have an encroachment permit process, which allows them to apply for the encroachment. It's reviewed, and it's governed by our municipal code, Chapter 12, which governs the encroachments, the rights and limitations for their use. So per the exhibit up on the screen, typically, the road right-of-way from fronting residential lots goes from the center line to the property line shown there. So, yeah, center line to property line, that half of the road is typically on the fronting And that's usually dedicated at the time of the map's recordation. So again, in residential subdivisions, it's pretty standard. It's that half of the street gets dedicated to the public, and the agency accepts the dedication. And... and for the public use as well as for maintenance. So, that area becomes the purview of the local agency for maintenance of that roadway and for utility purposes as well. Over time, that area gets encroached upon by the public. This is what the parkway should look like all the time. This is a legal encroachment. There's no encroachment, actually. The public utility is there where they're supposed to be. You have the curb, gutter, sidewalk. At the back of rock, there's the little wall, which is perfectly legal. That's on the property, the fronting residential property. The rest of the area is clear for utilities and curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So, over time, let's see, there's another growth, low-growing bushes and plants are legal. They're fine. None of that is obstructing the access vehicular or pedestrian. Here, this is a sidewall that comes out along the property line, and the owner correctly stopped the wall at the right-of-way line. So, he does not encroach. And you can see, even though the sidewalk is a curb, there's next to the curb, curb-adjacent sidewalk, there's a six-foot area behind that that goes to the wall that's all public right-of-way. So, that should be kept clear. And here is just an utility. There's no encroachment there. The little drain line is legal out to the sidewalk, but it's removable should the utility need to come in there. It's not detrimental to the use of the parkway. So, what I'd like to continue on is, Grant Terrace, like many other cities, are dealing with, this is actually legal as well because it's flat, flat work, rock, but it's not obstruction or issue for the traveling public or the utilities.
Can you go back on just one slide there?
Sure.
Just for clarification purposes, one back behind that. Is it customary for us to run a drain line across the public sidewalk? Let it drain, in other words, let silt and so on drain across the public sidewalk?
We don't, we wouldn't allow that.
Okay.
If the applicant came in, there is a structure they could use to go under it, but that's not something we would have allowed. Along those lines, so the city has issues in some areas. Here's one where it goes out to the sidewalk, which is clearly encroaching because they surrounded the utility box with brick and the wall. So, it's encroaching into the road right-of-way. Mailboxes are typically allowed, but this is more of a monumental structure, which is really a hazard in the road right-of-way as well as access, maybe ADA constriction. So, it's not really, it's not a legal item. Here, the little plant or around the tree is what we needed to see. So, what happens is, again, the city is dealing with structures built by residents in the public right-of-way. These encroachments are often completed without a permit. The structures may add value to the home and increase, but they increase road hazards and hinder utility companies. Currently, any request to build anything in the public right-of-way is denied. And on May 24th, 2016, the city council reaffirmed the city's position of the practice of denying any encroachment permits in the right-of-way with certain structures. So, what we have been tasked with, let's see.
Yeah, and the odd thing about what's happening is that these structures that are being built are probably, were not done by contractors. So, when we have residents who actually hire a proper contractor, they come down to pull the permit, the contractor is told, no, you can't because you have to, you can't encroach upon the city's right-of-way. So, the residents then turn around and say, but look, look down the street. Everywhere down the street, you have this particular issue. And so, we find ourselves in a position where if you go down to Home Depot and hire someone to do it on the weekend, you end up with something like that. But if you hire a contractor to do it properly, they're not allowed to encroach into the public right-of-way. And so, a question before the council tonight is about how to allow someone to legally encroach in the public right-of-way with a clear understanding that if the item is going to create some issue in terms of a hindrance or needs to be repaired, that the repair will be done at the owner's expense, that at any point in time, if they're issued a revocable encroachment permit, they would have to, that wall would be taken down, it would not be replaced by the utility or the city. But in addition to that, we also have the legacy of these other items that are in the street. And so, how we propose to handle those things is that when a resident comes in to the city for a permit for something, as part of the process, we would look and we would see that they have this issue, we would then have them sign the revocable encroachment permit, give them the notification that, you know, this wasn't done legally and that we could remove it, you may have to remove it in case the utility company or the city were going to expand the road, you'd have to come in and remove that. So, I think with that, we are available for questions.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff at this point? Councilmember Wilson?
How do we override the, actually, I should say, the overriding consideration is that the public, anywhere within the public easement or dedication, represents a financial liability for the city. So, if we leave a grandfathered quote-unquote obstruction in the city, just like a long time ago, a commercial situation wanted to put a spaghetti sign out in the street because they were complaining because they didn't have enough exposure to their building so far as marketing. And the city council refused several times to allow that to happen primarily because it represented an obstruction. And an obstruction, as you know, within the public dedication means it becomes a city liability. So, I'm curious how we solve that.
One of the, one of the items in the process of the revocable encroachment agreement is having the owner execute a recorded licensing agreement with the city. And in the agreement, it states they're accepting that liability for that object. I would, for this process, we will confer with counsel, legal counsel, to get the wording for the agreement, but it would be executed and actually recorded so that it follows title of the property, so that it wouldn't be with individual people, but title of property.
So, it constitute a lien against the property if there was liability?
Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the revocable, or the revocable encroachment permit that we've been discussing would not only have an indemnification, it would also have an insurance requirement, and it is recorded against the property so that it applies not only to the current owner, but any subsequent owners until such time that the city revokes the encroachment permit.
Another point, though, I want to read to you is that.
Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry, Mayor. In terms of the process, for example, if we knew that a street was going to be expanded, we would not issue a revocable encroachment permit. If we, if we saw that, there's a picture here, let me go back to, something like this. If there is, okay, if there is something that someone wanted to put a wall there and they were going to be blocking off the access to that utility box, we would not, we would not allow that because we can't have the utilities blocked off from the actual service. They may configure the wall around it, but we would certainly not have that. And in certain cases, if that was something they really wanted to do and we were saying no, and they got permission from the utility company to do that, we would then entertain it. But we would certainly, we don't want to undo the sole purpose of having the easement for access for those utilities.
Councilmember Hesse?
Is this going to be additional cost permit on here? I mean, what's the price going to be for this permit? Is it going to be more than the regular permit or, since we have to do all these other steps?
Yes, we'll actually come back with an estimate in terms of the number of hours that it would take in order to issue a permit. Now, it should be the case where, once we dial it in, the component shouldn't be that expensive, we'll be able to view on GRS maps and so on, and so it should be that. But we should have a standard cost to review the process.
Councilmember Reiners?
And I may have missed it, what about the existing ones, like that mailbox that we saw? Is there going to be someone going around or is it going to be as they come up?
No, you're absolutely right. So, what would happen is that we would, if you came in, if you lived at that particular address and you came in to do something in the process and we looked at that, we would say, you know, this is, this requires revocable encroachment permit. Now, here's the one caveat that we have to be very clear on with the mailboxes. At any point in time that we are approached about ADA access, that's a whole completely different story, and we would need to comply with that above anything else.
And so, in what manner would we comply with?
I would say up to and including having them remove or move the box out of the public right-of-way.
Okay, so that would rest with the resident and not with the city to.
That is correct.
To pay for that. Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
This might have been a little bit before some folks' time, but I recall a ridiculous process the Lions Club went through over on Mount Vernon to get a sign that was identical to size as the existing signs in that area. And the argument at that time was is that it represented a potential traffic collision or a liability. And at that point, the idea was to have the Lions Club indemnify the city. And at that, unfortunately, the realism is, is that there's really no way for somebody to afford that kind of forever indemnity. I think we're steering down the wrong road here. I don't think we should, personally, I don't think we should allow any structures within the right-of-way dedication. I think that's the safest way to go. The only exception might be to that is when we've got bench seats where we've got, or these glass arrangements that allow, you know, in concert with the bus service, that makes sense, and there usually is some kind of reflective material and people know what they're for, and they usually sit underneath them when it rains, you know, so on and so on. But other than that, I can't see the idea because we're running ourselves into a situation where we're going to make various interpretations on everybody's mailbox. And every time they come to the city, they're going to say, well, what about down the street? No, the universal situation is, don't put it in the dedication. Put it in the dedication and it comes down. That's it. Period. That's the safest way to indemnify the city.
Councilmember Wilson? Based on the comments that you just made, are, that would put us in the position of going to every resident who is currently non-compliant and ask them to tear out walls and, and so that would be what you would advocate at this point? Okay?
That's absolutely correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Real quick.
Councilmember Reiners?
The one picture where the wall had to stop six feet short of the sidewalk, what's the purpose of that? That I could see would be frustrating if you're a homeowner and you want a wall to go to the sidewalk.
Because that's a right-of-way.
No, the.
Go back.
That one.
If I may, Madam Mayor, that area from the sidewalk up to that fence is the city's right-of-way. So, it's not really for the property owner to build anything there. That belongs to the city. It doesn't stop at the sidewalk.
What would that be used for?
Many times, like that, a cable box, cable things go in there, that area. It also allows for a buffer with regard to traffic issues.
So, they could curve their wall across the front? They just got to leave that six feet?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, no questions, so I will open up public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Jill Allen on Brentwood Street, Grant Terrace.
Thank you.
Been sick for a few months, so I got to make up for all the lost meetings I missed. Not trying to be a gadfly, but I'd like to remind Mr. Wilson, as I'm sure he's aware since he's lived here probably most of his life, and most of you are, because of the terrain of the lay of the land around here, my neighbor, for example, has a retaining wall, a large, like six-foot retaining wall that is within the city's right-of-way. Now, the house was built in the mid-'60s, as most around here were, a lot of them were. But the thing is, is that if you go to him and tell him, you got to take that back six more feet, then it's going to be, he's going to be walking out his front door into the city's, you know, he's going to need an encroachment permit for his front porch. That's how, it's really, some of these places, these older places were built that way, as I'm sure you're aware. So, it's not just mailboxes on the sidewalk. I mean, his sidewalk definitely does not meet ADA, but he can't help it, you know, at the front of his house if you were to pull in there. And I just want to, I'm sure you're aware, I just want to bring that out, that there are probably up in the hills, the high ground up behind us here, even more examples of that than we would have to, you know, how would you deal with that? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any other comments during this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
A motion to review proposed procedure for issuance of revocable encroachment permits for new and existing structures in the public right-of-way and direct staff to bring back ordinance for introduction.
I have a motion. Second, any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Mayor, motion passes. Councilmembers Reiners and Hesse vote yes. Mayor Proton votes yes. Mayor votes yes, and Councilmember Wilson votes no.
Thank you. And our last item, number 12, reject all bids for Street Slurry Seal Project and rebid the project. Mr. French, one more time, please give us a staff report.
Good evening again, Mayor Proton and council. Yes, this is a recommendation to reject the bids for the Slurry Seal Project and request council to direct us to rebid the Slurry Seal Project. This would be the first contract on our capital improvement program. The 2030 Vision Statement would support goal number two, to maintain public safety by investing in improvement structure. Background is, in November 15, 2016, the city council approved the five-year capital improvement program, which included a pavement management system. We have the pavement management system ranking there on the screen, and we ranked all the streets in the city. The program also utilizes the pavement condition index to determine the shape or the condition of the streets at this time. Based on that, it recommended maintenance to keep the streets in better condition for
Based on that, it recommended maintenance to keep the streets in better condition for the least amount of cost. A part of that recommendation was for, to first, Slurry Seal, a group of streets, and this contract was to perform that work with Slurry Seal. When we bid the project, we sent out a notice invitation to bid in January 2017. We had since received three bids, which are showing up on the screen, with All American Asphalt, American Asphalt South, and Pavement Coatings Company. The two bids were 1.1 million and change, and lowest bid, number two, was the 621,000. We did pursue the low bid, but they had specked out a product that was not in the Green Book specifications and was not accepted as a acceptable material, so that bidder was deemed nonresponsive. As a result of that, the bids came in, a few hundred thousand, 200,000 over our engineer's estimate, which was what the project's budgeted for, and rather than compromise the budget at this time, especially on the first contract of our five-year program, we opted to reject all bids, or are asking to reject all bids. We are actually repackaging the bid, oops, repackaging the bid project. We had specked out a REAS product, which is rubberized asphalt emulsion project, product. We feel the bids came in high because of that. Part of our repackaging is to go to a type-two slurry material, which is more common and less expensive than the REAS. With that, we are hoping to get more competitive bids and possibly more bidders for the project. If the council directs us to, we could rebid the project by March 31st, with the closing date at April. And the new schedule would set us back 30 days from our projected schedule. So, there is a time delay, but it's a month. We would still be able to start construction within this fiscal year and hopefully finish the project out within the 60-day timeframe for the bid package. With that, I would like to ask if there's any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no questions, is there, are there any requests to speak from the public? Okay, seeing no requests to speak, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move the Board of Contract, excuse me, I move to reject all bids for Street Slurry Seal project and rebid the project. Number one, reject all bids received by the Street Slurry Seal project, and two, rebid the Slurry Seal project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Mayor, motion passes. Councilmembers Reiners, Hesse, and Wilson vote yes. Mayor Proton votes yes, and Mayor votes yes.
All right, thank you. We have City Manager Communications next. Mr. Duffy, do you have any communications for us?
So, just wanted to reiterate the fact that, starting in April, the council will be funding an additional 40-hour sheriff officer for the month of April, May, and June. That will be at a cost of around $25,000 per month. The city, in its 2014-15 budget, had about $500,000 left. The council used that as one-time money, and they appropriated about $200,000 at the time. The council's been doing various public safety programs, and so for the next three months, the council will use those resources to increase the overall number of shifts where there are two officers every day in the city of Gran Terrace. In addition to that, notice that on Tuesday, April 18th, 2017, at 8:00 a.m., we'll be coffee with a cop at Chills. So, Chills will be open for coffee with a cop, coffee, and maybe we'll get a little bit of yogurt too. We encourage residents to come out, it's always a good time, and Lieutenant Wilf is there, and it's really an informal time to be able to talk with your local officer. There are no speeches, no, you know, sit down for 20 minutes, listen to someone. It's really that the majority of the officers that are assigned to Gran Terrace that you see on the beat on a regular basis are there, having a conversation with you, you get a chance to know them. So, with that, that's my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. This time, we are going to recess to close session. We have three items to consider. The first is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property at 22273 Barton Road. Our agency negotiator's GH Duffy, city manager on behalf of city of Gran Terrace, negotiating parties, Arizona Partners CHP Development Company, price and terms of payment are under negotiation. The second item is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property 22293 Barton Road and 22317 Barton Road. Agency negotiator GH Duffy, executive director on behalf of Housing Successor Agency, and the negotiating partners are also Arizona Partners CHP Development Company, under negotiation is price and terms of payment. Item three is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957, title city manager. And so, for those of you who will not be here when we come back, thank you so much for being here tonight, and at this time, we are in recess.